We'll call this council meeting Monday, November 8th to order. Invitation given by Mr. Kenner and the pledge allegiance by Mr. Dahl.
Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for your great goodness towards us. We ask you to be with the mayor and council this evening as they go about the public business. Lead, guide, and direct them in all that they do. These things we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Phillips, will you do a roll call?
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Ms. Tolliver?
Here.
Mr. Ashburn?
Here.
Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Before we move to adopt the agenda, number 13, if you've got the list, that's 15 on it, number 13 will be striking for tonight. We'll move that off for tonight. 13, that's three sleeper. Take a motion to approve as amended to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is adopted as amended. Next is approval of the previous minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. It's no old business, so we'll move straight to new business. First thing tonight, public hearing for an alcohol license to Kim Lappin doing business as a Quick Stop. This is the time and place for the public hearing. Is anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? Ms. Phillips, will you do investigative report?
The applicant is Kim Lappin. Establishment is Scottsboro's Quick Stop. Type of license, retail beer off-premise. The location is 802 South Broad Street. There were four businesses surveyed with no objections. One resident surveyed with no objections. Nearest church and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply, and zoning verification complies.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. That will conclude the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve the alcohol license?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two was supposed to be the public hearing for the Quick Mark. Anyone here for the Quick Mark? We will strike that from tonight unless they show up. And number three, the public hearing for the Scottsboro Food Mart. Anyone here for the Scottsboro Food Mart? We'll strike past that one also. So we'll move to number four. Consider the resolution for a one-time pay raise for city employees. And this was already included in the budget for this year. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, consider the resolutions for a maintenance agreement with Aldoc for the shops at Scottsboro. This would authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, a resolution for the highway safety improvement Atrip project for 72 and County Park Road. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, consider a resolution that would authorize the mayor and city clerk to apply for the CARES Act grant. This would be the pave the park in an access lane at the Jackson County Rescue Squad building that was used for COVID testing. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, consider approval of agreement for the Tennessee Riverline project. This is $150 will be our portion that will come out of tourism grant. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, consider approval of the Alabama Bash Trail contract for June of 2022. And our portion, the city's portion will be $3,750 that would come out of the tourism grant. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, consider agreement with the retail recruiting firms. Of course, you have two different firms in your pocket. One is a yearly fee, which would cost the city $20,000 a year. The other is an incentive fee that would, we wouldn't know unless they brought something. We would pay that. And these would have to come out of excess sales tax from the 2021-2022 year. So, hearing that, do I have a motion to approve either one of these firms?
Mr. President, I make a motion that would go with Retail Strategies.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, consider the solid waste laborer job classification change. This is changing the laborer job from a one to a four to match up with the other laborer jobs in the city. We would take $5,000 out of excess budget from the 2021-22 year to cover this. So do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, consider the resolution for land acquisition for municipal purposes. This money was in the budget from budget time. So do I have a motion to approve the land?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13 will skip and we'll go to 14. Consider the revision to budget to amend for solid waste department. This was authorized Mr. Ledwell to use money that we had proved for a, two new dump trucks to be used at an auction. Do I have a motion for this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would ask that we table this. At the current time, the, in getting prices on these vehicles, they're considerably higher than what, what we thought that they would be. And I'd like to get back on where we're buying a new vehicle so we can get back on the buyback program.
I'd also agree with that. Mr. Ashburn, the point was to be able to get on the buyback program with these trucks and find new use. We wouldn't be able to. We have a motion and a second though.
There would need to be a second to the motion of Mr. Ashburn to table.
Okay. Mr. Ashburn would like to table this. Do I have a second to table this? Can I step down a second?
Yes.
Do I have to move seats to do it?
Yeah, pass the gavel.
All right. Well, I will pass the gavel to Mr. Ashburn so I can, at the moment, step down so I can second Mr. Ashburn's motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. You're talking about for your motion?
For my motion.
Okay. Do that one first. Aye.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second and, don't know where to go from there.
If I may assist?
Yes.
The motion is motioned by Mr. Ashburn to table, which was seconded by Mr. Bailey, who has stepped down. If you are in favor of the motion to table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed to the motion to table, please signify by saying no.
Motion, motion carries. I'll give the gavel back to the president.
Thank you, sir. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, Matt. All right. So that'll be tabled. Later date. All right. Number 15, architectural review board appointment. Let me get, no. All right. So, on the behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, they have asked to appoint Jacob Bergman from their commission onto, onto the architectural review board. So, you have one appointment. Do I have a motion to approve Jacob Bergman being moved on to the architectural review board?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? In discussion, I'll go ahead and say there's still one opening on that board. And if anybody wants to serve on that board who's able to, just to contact Whitney and then we'll go from there. Want someone else?
Mr. President, I'd like to speak to legal counsel just a minute before we come in.
Sure.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to put Mr. Bergman on the architectural review board. No other discussion will vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move back to number two. I see Mr. Patel made it. And I want to get this taken care of for him. So, this is time and place for a public hearing for the alcohol license for the Quick Mark for Mr. Patel. And anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? Okay. Yes. Ms. Phillips, will you do investigative report?
The applicant is Garishba Patel. Type of license, retail beer and wine off-premise. The establishment is Quick Mark located at 2307 South Broad Street. There were two businesses surveyed with no objections. Nearest church and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply, and zoning verification complies.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. This will conclude the public hearing for the alcohol license for the Quick Mark. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And so we'll move to the other one now. This, this will be a public hearing for the Scottsboro Food Mart. Yes. All right. So this is time and place for the public hearing. Anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? Ms. Phillips, you do investigative report for this one.
The applicant is Janish Patel. Type of license, retail beer and wine off-premise. The establishment is Scottsboro Food Mart located at 1533 South Broad Street. There were five businesses surveyed with no objections. Nearest church and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health inspection complies. Fire and building inspections are pending final inspection, and zoning verification complies.
Okay. Thank you. This will conclude the public hearing. So do I have a motion to approve this pending final inspections?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That will conclude the meeting. We'll move to delegation.
Mr. Morgan.
I might go way up here. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
The only thing I want to discuss with this council and the citizens of Scottsboro is that some citizens approached me and had it made me aware of a situation down on the, oh, I guess you would say the site, Brownfield site, actually. Now, do y'all know where a Brownfield site is here in Scottsboro? Well, that'd be down here on the Norandal and where Scottsboro Aluminum was. That is a declared Brownfield site. And also, it is a hazardous material site. And there's some folks that want to expand out there. I don't know what the extent or expansion is. Only thing I know, that's a Brownfield site. And it has not been authorized for a, any kind of remediation or taking away the hazardous materials that is down there. Know for a fact there's hazardous materials down there, like cadmium, mercury, and, and all sorts of other hazardous materials down there. So, as people come down here and propose to develop this site surrounding the, the old plant down there, what's going to be done about cleaning it up? Is it just going to be left there? There's going to be no cleanup? Or is there going to be a cleanup? Is there ever going to be a cleanup down there? That's all I got to ask about it. And, I mean, what's the city council's thoughts on it? And what is the planning commission's thoughts on it? Because it is a Brownfield site. It is on the EPA list. So, as people come forward and say, well, we want to develop this down there and we want to expand our development, what's going to go on? I mean, I'm here to present to you to say there's a problem there. And whether it be, say, okay, it's going to be denied, the development's going to be denied, but what's going to be done about it? There's a lot of hazardous materials down there. There's a pond that contains hazardous materials. I have personally interviewed people that have said that they dumped hazardous materials off the end of the dock down there. I have seen situations where there's hazardous materials, burials out on the south side of the island, which City of Scottsboro owns, to include the pond, which is not owned by the City of Scottsboro, but which includes any development. So, anyway, the reason I come forward before you today is say, what's going to go on? What are you going to do about the hazardous materials that is on site? As people propose to develop this area, is it just going to be left alone? Or is there going to be any kind of removal? Which, by the way, there is lots of money that's available to remove the hazardous materials, but it hasn't been removed yet. It's there, on site. I've got a massive map that, that was given to me by the City of Scottsboro planners previously that demonstrates all the hazardous materials areas that's out there. So, what do you plan to do to remove the hazardous materials? Or what's the planning commission, or anybody that proposes to develop that area, what are you going to do about it? That's all I'm going to say. That's the big question. Like, it's a big question mark. What are you going to do about it? Just going to let it sit there? You know, you've got already a lot of folks that has, is living that area, but there's plans to develop the area further. So, personally, this, this citizen says, and I belong to a lot of environmental groups and, and I'm just questioning, what are you going to do about it? There's, there's hazardous materials there. As the planning commission considers it, as other people come into town and say, well, we want to fill up this site. Well, okay, that's fine, but there's hazardous materials in that area. Mercury, cadmium, arsenic, that's there, present on the site. You just going to leave it there? And I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Little, are you aware of any hazardous materials that were, been on any of the sites down there that are being planned on being developed? Mr. Kenner, you've been here longer than anyone else.
There was one particular area which was cleaned up that Mr. Morgan, I believe, reported to the A.D.M. That's on city property.
That's correct. But there's still, as far as A.D.M. goes, there's other areas that is hazardous materials. The pond is a, and when I speak of the pond, there's this large pond, probably two acres, three acres in diameter.
And this is on the proposed plan that's going to be developed?
Well, it's right next to it.
Okay. And, and you have reported stuff to A.D.M. that needed cleaned up and they did it?
I have.
And, but you didn't report this?
No, I have reported.
Oh.
The problem is, is that there needs to be a full site inspection to determine, to include the city's property. South of the power line, there's burials there as well, hazardous materials. There's hazardous materials in that site from southeast, southwest of the plant site.
But not in the site that's wanting to be developed? You're talking about on the city side?
No, I think there probably is hazardous materials. And the problem is, you don't know what, exactly what's there. There must be a survey. There's got to be somebody that's going to go in and determine what the hell has been buried out there. And, and that's the problem.
I can speak for all of the owners of the properties on Goosebend Island. I can speak for the City of Scottsboro's properties on Goosebend Island. And Environmental One and Environmental Two studies have been done.
Well, I'm going to say, I know for a fact there's burials on the City of Scottsboro's property. Holes that has been drilled down into the ground where its barrel's been placed down there. Now...
But we're not here to engage you in debate, Mr. Morgan.
You're exactly right, sir. And I agree with you. Only reason I'm here to say is there's problems there. There's a problem on the site. And, and people have come to me and said, okay, we're going to develop a road that's going to swing around. And a proposal to develop properties adjacent to the old, old Norandal site. So, that, that proposes a question in my mind, has there been any surveys to determine exactly what is the hazardous materials develop on a site? Because there is, I mean, it's a, it's an EPA-designated hazardous material site. The whole area is. So, I mean, what's going to be done to clear it up? That's all I'm saying. Because there's proposals to develop the site. And EPA has said there is hazardous materials on site. So, I don't know.
Are you talking about the Brownfield site?
Brownfield, yes, sir.
Which is not in the city limits of the City of Scottsboro.
Well, all right. But that contact, yes, you're exactly right, sir. It's not within the city limits of Scottsboro, but it comes into contact with city limits of Scottsboro. As a matter of fact, since you mentioned it, it drains down into the drainage area adjacent to the Goosebend Colony. There's, there's berms there that drains down. Berms that contain drums that drains down into that.
Turn that into EPA.
Oh, yes.
A.D.M., Mr. Morgan. And have they taken any action on these things?
That's the problem. They have not taken any action on it. That's a problem that presents for the citizens of Scottsboro. It presents a problem for the city council. Because this is what we're talking about. We have people that wants to develop the area. And there's a problem in the area. And it's the reason I'm standing up here. People have come to me and said, hey, we're presenting, we're saying, we're presenting a protest to develop this property. I said, well, that's interesting because there's hazardous materials buried on that property. And I say, okay, there's a pond, there's other hazardous materials in the southeast and the southwest period of that property. So how far is the expansion of that property going to go? But it's not only that, it's also Native American burials there, which I have been personally involved in.
All right.
So, you know, it's what I'm saying, is there's problems in development of the property. So...
All right, Mr. Morgan. We, we get your concerns and, of course, your time's been way up and I appreciate your time. But, like I say, I, I believe we'll talk about it in between the council and listen to your concerns.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. But I, I want to express to you that the problem with hazardous material, we're talking about mercury poisoning into the waterways. We're talking about burials into the, that pond that exists on the property out there. This is not anything that should be taken lightly. And my concern is, there's never been any kind of investigation into the extent of the contamination of the property out there. But homes expand and now there's another, another extension into the expansion of projects out there. And it's, what are you going to do about the, the problems there that exist as far as contamination of the area, the waterways in the, out there in the land?
I'm going to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
No other delegations will move straight to reports. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. The REITCOM's annual food drive is going on now through November the 22nd. They are accepting canned and non-perishable items. So anyone that has any that they would like to donate between now and the 22nd of November, you can drop them off during regular business hours and these will be turned over to Jackson County DHR to help local families through the holidays. Also, Thursday's Veterans Day. There will be a wreath laying at 9:30 at Veterans Memorial Park. And I would certainly urge everyone to attend that. There'll be refreshments to follow at the VFW and American Legion Post home. And then at 10:45 is the Veterans Day program at Collins Elementary. Mr. Hal Lewis has done this for many years and they do a really good job with it. They've got a great speaker again this year. So, I would urge everyone to, to go to the park Thursday morning and then to Collins for the program afterwards. That's all I got, Mr. President.
Well, while you're speaking about the REITCOM, I had a discussion this morning. Far as the Recreation Advisory Board, have they started meeting yet? Okay. Okay. Can you see that that, that they start that soon? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor. Mr. Stewart?
I really don't have anything tonight, but thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburn?
I really don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolliver?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
Nothing for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, there will be a work session next Monday. Thank you. So, there will be a work session next Monday. I know a lot of people are asking, because after that planning meeting, we moved that to, that work session. And speaking with those developers, I don't know if that'll be on there or not. So, we'll figure it out by Friday if they're gonna come back. And if they're coming back, I'd assume to tell you to get here early to get a seat. Okay? I have nothing else, so at this moment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Were adjourned.